Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board for the Village of Pinehurst. My name is Jack Farrell. I'll be sitting in for the chair, who happens to be away at this time, Mr. Hooper. And so also, we do have five people, which is a quorum. And unfortunately, two other, three other people were unable to join us today. That's Mr. Roberts, Ms. McCarroll, and Ms. Rothstein. However, we do have five members, and I'll ask the members to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Yeah. Philip Schumaker.
Matt Jones.
Julia Latham.
David Alzamora.
Thank you. And joining us with the, and leading the effort, will be the planning staff, Darren Birch, Alex Cameron, Maria Carpenter, and Alfred Cassidy, be working with us today. Along with Shannon Canston-New, who's be trying to keep up with the effort and record what we're saying. This will be recorded and videotaped, so please, please speak clearly into the microphones, so that anyone who may be watching it online can understand exactly what's going on. There will be no public input at this meeting, as this is a work session only. What we'll be doing is working again to further establish the form-based codes that apply to the Village Place area, in an effort to move that along and get that done as soon as possible. So with that, Darren, do you want to lead us off?
I will do that, thank you. Shannon, can you pull, first of all, can you pull down, are the documents pulled down, the PDFs? Just pull them down, so, because we'll be referring to them. Thanks for attending. We've been seeing a lot of each other lately. This meeting, I'm going to try and keep short, to two hours, because people have to leave. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna circle back a little bit to the package that I gave to you for this time. You can see we've made some adjustments to the regulating plan. You can see we've made some adjustments or created a kind of a land use table, divided everything up into districts. And then we're gonna start to look at a little bit about Section 2 as a site design, and that's really becomes those lot standards, the setbacks, build-to-lines, things like that. And what I've provided to you there is, A, the Section 2, this document from the form-based code. And then what we did is, we went ahead and took some of the, we took the standards that are set forth with, or recommended in this document, and we actually put them in into our table of, was it Table 9.2? Right, yeah, Table 9.2, how this would potentially look on our own setback table, yeah, table of dimensional requirements. So that's what I intend to try and get through today. First of all, comments on what we are trying to achieve with the land use plan, or with the regulating plan. Shannon, can you pull down that land, the regulating plan? So you can see what we've tried to do. Let me go help. There it is. Okay. So you can see what we've tried to do with the regulating plan is, we're starting to do, you know, as the form-based code and what we're trying to achieve in this district, you know, we're trying to create this vibrant kind of mixed-use district. And we understand that in our discussions, that certain parts of these areas are gonna be more, a little bit more intense with land uses, and others are gonna be less intense. So what we started to do is, we started to just, you know, kind of create many districts within this overall Village Place plan, and then we've started to name those districts, so we can, as we start to have the discussion about the regulating plan, we started to color codes, so you can say, oh, this is the core area. The core area, these are the kind of uses we want to establish. Now, these names aren't set in stone. We were just sitting around, and we just named them. So, they can change. So, you know, we have, we have the core area, which, let me get my, let me get the mouse now. I should just hit the computer monitor. All right. So we have this core area, and this area, which is composed of blocks A, B, C, D, and E. And then we go up to block, we go to Lower Rattlesnake, it's a very aptly named, right? And that's blocks J, H, I, and G, Upper Rattlesnake, M, N, L, and K. And then we have kind of the two outliers, the Clark Cadillac site, which is right over here, and then the old, the Tradition site. So those were the kind of the two outliers to the neighborhood. We're still gonna, we'll still have a regulating, the regulating plan will still apply to them, but I just couldn't, I couldn't figure out a way to get them, these other ones made kind of a natural sense, the way it lays out. And when we tried to do this, you can see that, you know, we tried to create this divide here between where Kelly Road kind of comes through here, and, you know, land uses to the south of Kelly. You've got, you've got a lot of mixed uses in there. You've got some bars, some restaurants, you've got a printing shop, so you got a taxi place. So you've got a variety of uses here. And then when you start to get up from that to the north towards Rattlesnake, now you've got an area that, where you have existing development, I think you have some existing multiple family in here, you have an existing single family. So this is where, you know, we're really looking at changing that to the office type of environment. Then when we go all the way to the north, to Rattlesnake, or to Highway 211, that's where that existing rehabilitation center is. So you can see how we kind of laid it out, I'm just wondering, and a couple, a couple other notes before we get into general discussion. When we were putting together the map, we were on Block L. So Block L, I believe, we only were showing that as, Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, mixed use, right, at one point? And then I think we decided that, I think the intent was that we allow for offices in that area. So what we did on that particular block is, I think we were just showing it as one, that might have been an error on our part, but we did add back into that block office. Comments on that, or does anybody?
Well, I have, so I know I missed a meeting, the last meeting on this, but the table that I have, where we went through this two work sessions ago, we actually had an L, mixed-use office, retail, and live-work.
I think we modified, anybody, I thought we modified that down. Anybody else have any other recollection on that block? Because when we were preparing it, we just had, we just had land use one, which is mixed use, right? I mean, but if I, if we're mixing something, I don't, I didn't think we wanted retail in this block. We wanted retail in the block above, because there's an actual, there's a service station up there. But this block, when we're having the discussions with council, this was the area where they had thought, they thought offices would be more appropriate, could be medical offices, things like that, as, you know, the proximity to Highway 211. That was my recollection. I didn't have all those land uses on there, Matt. Does anybody else have any other recollection? Jack, you remember everything?
I think you articulated it correctly, the office going down Rattlesnake, transitioning into the center core area, rather than retail on Rattlesnake.
I think we might have missed it on Block M, too. So maybe it was Block M, too. Block M only currently shows mixed use? I think it should probably have a 2 on that as well.
That's what I recall, also.
Okay.
And I'll send you my table, which, again, y'all might have updated this in the meeting, I wasn't here, but I've got a couple different uses, also in A, B, C, H, I, J.
You're outvoted.
Which is fine, I'm just looking for consistency.
No, we did spend some time, we did spend a lot of time looking at uses in these blocks. You can send it to me, but we, I think the ones that we pinpointed in, honed in are the ones that, as a group, I think we saw some consensus. The other thing that I-
M and L would have the same uses, 1 and 2, which is mixed-use and office, is that correct?
And, oh, M, as a man, yep, yep. And then we kept 2 because of the retail at the corner, that, the shortstop over there. So I think, you know, if, if office is the environment we want to kind of foster in that, so we'd have the office, and then we'd have the potential mixed use in that area. Moving down, you can see that I have the circle about revisiting active frontage requirement, and we can come back to that at some point. We don't have, we don't work through that today, but you can see that area, there are questions whether we should be, should we be requiring the active frontage on those two areas of Rattlesnake and McIntyre as a requirement, allow it to happen organic, naturally? And just, we're trying to focus all those efforts into that core area to create that vibe down there. So it was really, it makes that area more special by focusing that land use requirement in that area. They could still do it in McIntyre, at the corner of Rattlesnake, but it wouldn't be mandatory, so they'd have more flexibility with respect to the land use. Anybody have any general, any other comments on that?
No, there was quite a bit of discussion on that, as I recall.
There was.
Whether we really want to extend active street activity up those two streets away from the core. I don't know the exact resolution on that.
I think allowing it, making it permissive but not mandatory would be-
I think that's-
Is that whoever's there can kind of make that decision. Yep.
I think that was, that was kind of getting to be the gist of that conversation. So I guess we'll keep that there, and as we move it forward, we'll, I just want to keep it highlighted, so something might change as we're moving through this process, but we'll just keep it there with the circle. Thoughts on the way we've kind of district, sub-district out this area with the color coding? Is there any general comments on that, how we're trying to present it? Really, the idea is, you know, we're creating these focused areas where we can, you know, create that, you know, in the core area, we can create the vibe in the core area, office district up top. So, any thoughts on that? Plus, it'll lead us into our next conversation with the table of permitted uses. I think it's very, I think it's very helpful, as you're looking at, as you're looking at what's potentially allowed in those areas, and you can, you can really reference back. So any other comments on the regulating plan before we move forward? Again, we're not done with all this stuff, but we keep refining these things to make them better.
The color for, for the, for Clark is, is the color, I mean, I know that's only that property, but would it be helpful to have, like, other properties that are already developed as a color for some things there, and it's not likely that it's gonna, or maybe like a hatching that shows, yeah, I mean, because that dealership could just as likely close as, you know, something else significant could close.
You would have a lot of hatching on this map, then, because I think a lot of, a lot of what we're proposing here would be redevelopment. So if you start to look at where the public services facility is, and you look at a lot of the areas in the core, then if you're getting up towards Rattlesnake to blocks M and L, that's already developed with multiple family uses right now, and L has got, I think, a single-family use on there. So, I mean, what we can do is, we can shade a map that way, just to show it for reference purposes, but not all the, you know, long-term, not all the uses are intended to stay that are, that are developed here at this point. So the plan is setting up to allow for them to redevelop effectively. Clark, that'll probably be there for the long term, right?
So would it be better for that to be more yellow than blue, just because it's in that lower Rattlesnake area? Regardless of its development status, but just in terms of how it fits the others around it, in terms of being consistent? I'm just throwing it out.
No, I'm just looking, I'm looking at the-
Having one property that's one color just seems pretty specific.
Yeah, but the main goal is still the uses, at least to me. Because the other one, I mean, they're, they're kind of by location, but they're divided by those roads, so, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, I just don't know the benefit necessarily, as long as the uses are what we're looking at.
Right. Well, the only benefit is, like, less, less colors. Like, too many colors, they start to all not mean as much.
One, two, there's not a lot of colors on there.
Shades of green.
Point, point taken. I think when you look at it, when we, that, too. When we get into the actual, when we start to look at the land uses, you're gonna see that there's a lot of, there's a lot of different land uses that are being permitted on that block, that I, that kind of do isolate it versus all the other uses out there.
These color codes indicate current zoning?
No.
Almost, though. It seems like they're, they're close.
Then we did a better job than I thought, because that wasn't even, that wasn't even in Justin's mind when he created-
So the color code is arbitrary at this point in time?
Yes. The color code is arbitrary as-
Just to differentiate the blocks.
I, when we were doing this, we were just trying to create that various districts of sub-districts within this overall Village Place district. That's it. So we can change the colors, they don't have to be the same color. It was just showing that F, F to me, I was, I was a little bit confused, or not confused, I was questioning, you know, what we should be doing with F.
Whether it's part of those other two sections.
Yeah. And same thing with Block O, you know, over there where the Village Residential is, where it's all residential. So that's just a green color sitting there. But we can always come back, we can always change the colors, and not everything, you know, if we, if we think that yellow's the appropriate color within, within, within Lower Rattlesnake, see, what it does is, when you start to look at the table of permitted uses, we've tried to, once again, keep all the, all the kind of similar uses in that, in that grouping, but again, there's, Clark was kind of an isolator, the Tradition site is an isolator, and really Block N over there in Upper Rattlesnake is an, is kind of a different land use in that area as well. So we might have to isolate that out as well. So, any other questions on the regulating plan?
Okay, one more, since we're asking questions.
All right, go ahead.
L, the boundary for L falls in a place that's really in between, it's like in between parcel boundaries, if you take the village property and cut it, then it's there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that intentional, or should that be adjusted?
We can, this L, the L boundary line, right, right here, you mean? This one?
That one.
Yeah, we can adjust that one. We can certainly-
But that, that came out of, because they did have that Medlin Road extension that was going all the way to Magnolia, and we wanted to remove that, so that's what kind of created that little bit of that space when we-
It's leftover from that being there.
Yes, as you notice, we were able to take out that Medlin extension, we removed the, we removed that real good job that I did of putting that, that crosshatching over here on the residential blocks, and then we backed out those properties along Magnolia from the boundaries, or along, yeah, along Magnolia. All right, any other questions, Matt?
Good, thank you.
It's good, ask questions, I like it. All right, so let's now pull out your handy-dandy table here. Shannon, can you pull down this table? Can you pull down the table? You need this, don't you? Can you give that to her, please? All right, so, the, the table of uses, this is, you know, this is the, so the regulating plan, we're going from the regulating plan to kind of control uses within this district, within the Village Place, to, you know, kind of create the vibe that the Village Place plan, the vision that the Village Place plan is trying to set. So what we've done is, we've taken our land use table, our table of, table of uses, and what we've done is, A, divided it out by, by area, core area, Clark Cadillac, Lower Rattlesnake, and Upper Rattlesnake, and Traditions. And then what we've taken is our general land use category, is residential lodging, office, service. We've put all those uses on, on this table, so we can start looking at, okay, the X's that you see on there, the red X's are the uses that are actually currently zoned within that area. So if we have an X, and we have a red X that we're proposing to take it out, that means it's a use that we're not proposing that, that fits in that particular area, because it's, should a single-family residential use be something that we're trying to promote within that core area blocks? And, you know, the work that we've done here by the building types that we're putting in here, no, it doesn't fit into that area. So there's, there's some where I have just an X that we're proposing to take it out, and then there's one where I have, where we have hyphens around something, because it's a question whether we should have that land use in that area or not. So, so you just want to start and go down it, and-
Let me ask a question, as for the legend on the upper right there. So should the second X be a black X? You want to answer?
Black X, and then there are red X's.
That's a good point.
Right, I understand the red X's are X's that are, are uses that would not be, according to the regulating plan, and the way we worked on it so far, would not be allowed in that area, is that correct?
Yes.
And the black X would be uses that are, at least so far, that we have discussed, that would be allowed in that area, is that correct?
That are, that are also permitted under the existing zoning, right? Yeah, that's it. So, the existing zoning district, so that was a good catch, so we can, we can reform, we can add that. There's one change that I think, if we get to dwelling single-family, well, let's, any other questions on the basic table itself? No? All right, so let's start off under the residential category. So you can see another residential category in the core area, so blocks A, oh, the other thing that, to note, as you're looking at the table, there's a little asterisk after, after some of the blocks, that indicates that that block has a proposed active frontage. That means, the active frontage means that it has to be some type of, what do we call it? A restaurant or some type of retail storefront operation. Doesn't mean that the second floor can't be another use, but the primary use has to be retail or restaurant, something in that vein. All right.
But the active frontage may only appear on a portion of, or one side of the block, not necessarily the entire perimeter, is that correct?
Correct, that's what makes it a little bit more difficult.
Okay, so it gets complicated quickly.
It is, it's gonna get comp, it's, we're recognizing that, we're gonna have to, we're either gonna have to make it all, all active frontage, or figure out another way around that.
Correct, okay, thank you.
So, office use is not active frontage?
It is not.
Got it.
Because it doesn't, the whole intent of the active frontage is to create that, that active pedestrian environment, like, you know, like we have down at the Village Center right now. That's the intent, so you've got a bunch of shops, sans the offices.
But like, salons would be active frontage.
That's a good question.
Depends on the salon, could depend on the office.
Well, that's what I was thinking. So an office can't be active frontage?
No, because it's not one of those, it's not one of those types of, like a retail, it's not like a retail, well, it's not retail, it's not retail or a restaurant. Yours is a, that's a personal service.
I mean, a salon, it's the type of thing where you might go in for two hours, or you might go in for 45 minutes.
All right, this is what I'm thinking.
But wouldn't the active frontage be oriented towards, is not necessarily a destination, it may be you're passing by and you happen to realize there's a retail or some, some other use that you want to take advantage of. Whereas a salon, you might be, you come from, to go, you have an appointment and you go there, as you might have an appointment in a professional office building.
Generally speaking.
I think what I'm hearing is, we might need to delve down into the active frontage definition a little bit, because-
Well, I'm just, I'm thinking about the community I used to live in, in Alexandria, and it was, you know, a mixed-use situation with apartments above and, you know, and down below, they had a dry cleaner, they had a salon, they had a coffee shop, they had, you know, they didn't have offices, but the, it was basically, they were basically services that were there to support the folks who lived in that community. So you might have a corner grocery, but the idea was there, they were trying to build within a walkable community, the things that you would use in your kind of everyday life. I don't know if that's our goal, or if our goal is something else.
I mean, this is a good discussion, and we're gonna need to have it, I think we might be a little ahead of ourselves, because if you look at the table, the very last one on the page one, where according to your legend there, and you indicate is, let's discuss these type uses. Maybe we can, when we get there.
So, Alex, can we, you gotta keep, keep the train rolling.
And with that, I'm gonna derail your train. With that thought, you know, something like a bank is a use that people tend to use more casually, whereas a lawyer's office is something that most of us don't use casually, you know, the, I guess the question is, what is it that we're trying to accomplish?
In this, where we have active frontage, it is to create that active pedestrian-oriented kind of service district, where, where people are walking around, you're doing your, you're doing your shopping, you're, you know, it's restaurant eating, things like that. So it's, it's really, I think it's meant to just bring people in, and you're talking, some of the stuff you're talking about is what a neighborhood district serves as.
Sort of, yes. You know, but I also think about our own village, and there's a little nail salon between a retail store and a restaurant there. And, you know, it's the type of thing where my mom and I will go get a pedicure and go get lunch. And that's part of what you want for people coming into a center. So it's just, it's just thinking about the way people use these things, because that may work towards your goal, I don't know.
But then, then again, you know, the counter to that is, if they were all personal services along the block frontage, what would that do to that, the vibe that we're trying to create in that, you know, that lively downtown environment? So, you know, is, is that use gonna be allowed in this district? Sure, it's gonna be allowed in this, in this district, especially if you start to look at that, that Lower Rattlesnake area, I think, you know, there's already those types of uses. There's a barber shop right there, right now, you know? So you do have that use, so it's, really, it's that core area, do you want that? Now, you could also do, we know that it could be a mixed use, so can we have horizontal mixed use? Meaning, could, could you, no, could you have, on the same building, same frontage, could you dedicate, say, we say 60% of the, the frontage has to be inactive, being retail or restaurant, and you'd have the option to have 20% or 10% or whatever in some type of other use, like a personal service? I hadn't thought through that, so I'd have to do some research.
My notes from the August 4th meeting, where we discussed just that at the beginning of the architectural standards, and we kind of landed on 50%.
50%?
And I guess there, does it have to be contiguous? Because you wouldn't want to, depending on how it's broken up, you wouldn't want, you know, one use here, and then that percentage be spread out down the street.
No, I mean, somebody got their first in, so you're done with your, with what you're talking, you know, almost like a cap system.
Yeah.
Yeah. A cap or separation system. So we, so we had, we did talk about that 50%, approximately 50%, so that's something we need to, something we need to, I guess we need to revisit a little bit, and talk about a little bit, so. I'm glad we had that conversation. Any other people trying to get me off the tracks? No? All right, so let's start. So we get into the residential area, let's start with the core blocks, and we'll go across. So if you look at single, single, single-family, two-family, and multiple-family, dwellings, clustered, family daycare, I think we've got to make an X on that one later on, halfway houses, we're proposing to remove. So really, the only thing under the residential category that we were, that we're currently proposing in the core block area is dwelling mixed use. And I think that came, and that kind of lines up with what we were talking about with, with the, let's see, we got 1, 3, 4, which is, we got mixed use, we've got office, but we do have 4, we have live-work.
And is that?
But that is a mixed use. That is, that, the difference between that, the mixed use with the live-work is, generally it's an individual, it's like a townhouse, but the, but the businesses that have, generally will have their own property line in there, I believe. I might have to revisit that one, too. Jack, you-
I don't know, it's complicated, just trying to envision all the potential uses of structures is probably an exercise, I'm not sure I want to get into 100%. I can see some broad categories, lodging, service, office, and so forth, but when you get, when you try to slice this too finely, I'm not sure that we can do that entirely.
Well, and we're not. I mean, we're, we're getting into general land use categories, so when you start to get into a personal service, that's a general, that's a broader land use category that's defined within, within the PDO. So we're saying, as a general, as a general type of use, would that personal service be acceptable in that particular area?
Well, is a personal service, let's say, dry cleaners, let's take that as a personal, would you call that a personal service?
Yeah, it's his own definition.
Okay. Would it make sense for a dry cleaner to be in a storefront type of establishment? Maybe. I mean, many that I know of are, some aren't, and so there's a variety of, of characteristics of this type of business that can appear as retail, almost retail, if you will, and yet they're probably considered personal services. I mean, so I wouldn't, I don't know how to cut this too finely, I'm a little worried- I'm a little worried about doing that, to tell you the truth. I like the broad categories of residential, lodging, office, and service, but I don't know how fine you can get beyond some of these broad categories. I don't know what everyone else thinks about those.
We're not getting, we're, we're essentially, what we're doing is we're taking the existing zoning, which the majority of this for the core area is zone VMU. And we're, and we're, we are getting into, we're slicing it down, saying, the VMU currently allows, you can put single-family anywhere in that area, right? With VMU. What we're saying is, you know, we don't want single fam- because of what we're trying to achieve in that area, we don't think single-family is appropriate. We don't think, think two-family is appropriate in this area. We do think that a dwelling mixed use is appropriate in this area.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand that. Well, maybe when we start applying today's uses to these areas, then that's what we were trying to do here, right?
Mm-hmm. That's, and that's, yep. And that's why, and, and we are, we're not, we're not introducing any new uses. What we're saying is, we're, we're actually, which I, which I, we're, we're honing in, we're, 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 we're limiting the number of uses that are allowed in this district to try and create the environment that the, that the Village Place Plan was trying to create. So, again, if we, if, so if you take that core area where the active frontage is, and you say, let's put a bunch of single families in there, let's put a bunch of two-families in there, that doesn't create the vibe that we're trying to achieve. So, what we're saying is, you can't have that in that district.
Yeah, unless, unless you're worried about the residential. It's, it's when we get to the office service and the, the commercial and entertainment and some of these other areas where it gets a little more complicated and it's a little more unclear whether something is retail, whether it's office service, or whether it's entertainment.
Well, there, there are things that, that aren't, though. A crematoria. Do we think a crematoria would be a?
Well, no, I, I'll go along with that. But let's take indoor amusements, or indoor amusements.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the contemplation, I don't know what you think an indoor amusement is. I'm sure we all have different concepts of what.
We have a definition of what indoor amusements are.
The playing board meeting, that's indoor amusement, isn't it?
An arcade of machines and so forth would be, that would be?
Billiard hall?
A billiard hall?
Skating rinks, roller rinks.
Skating rinks.
What's in that definition packet, right?
I don't know that that one is defined.
Establishments that provide commercial entertainment activities completely within an enclosed structure, such as video arcades, skating rinks, roller rinks, and bowling alleys.
There, we have a definition. So, there's two things we can do. We can say, that's not appropriate in that area, or we can change what the definition of, and we can refine them with the definition of indoor.
Oh, boy. We need to get into revining, changing the definition of all the uses in our table of uses. That would be a, I'm not sure we, we signed up for that.
We'll have to do that. I could, we, we can propose it.
It's under, it starts under amusements, comma, indoor.
We, we. We've jumped a little bit, but yes.
Well, don't let me slow you down. I understand where we're going on this here, and it, it does make sense, because the definitions of the blocks, as we discussed, that's what we're just applying as to whether or not, this is a realism test? Is that what we're trying to set, do essentially?
Well, it's, I agree, because, so for instance, A, A, B, C, D, those areas, we'd, we did not put office in those areas. So, E has office indicated as a possible use. So, when I look at the core area blocks under office, anything that has an X in there is kind of an exception to what we're saying on the use, correct? So, like, would that be what we would need to?
Anything with a red X?
Well, red or black, I guess. I mean, a red X in parentheses means we should talk about it.
What, what's she talking about now, Alex? What?
So, if, if you look at the regulating plan, and as Matt said, blocks A through D, none of those have office, number two, designated in any of those areas. So, that should be a pretty, if that's what we're gonna agree to, that should.
However, there's a second floor potentially. There will be a second floor.
That's why you have the parentheses around those Xs, right?
Yeah, that is correct. Because we have to remember, if you, if you go into blocks A, we have a minimum of two to three stories, or a minimum of two, two stories. Block B, we have a minimum of two stories. And block D, we have a minimum of two stories. So, if you're gonna get into that, there's gonna be a second floor. So, if somebody puts a retail or storefront operation on the first floor, you could put a, a residential living unit above that, you could put an office above that. So, you have those, so that's why I have those Xs, you know, for personal services or what are, some of the other uses. And they just might not work. Like a bank credit, credit union or financial services, probably doesn't work on the second floor. I don't know. But that's why I put it on there, under there for discussion.
Right, but, so the bank one is the one that probably stands out the most, because you, you say bank, and, I mean, one or two-story, a bank could build any kind of building, and it doesn't have to be mixed use, right? So, they could put a two-story fidelity bank over there.
Well, they could, because it wouldn't have the act, it wouldn't meet the active frontage requirements, retail.
Okay.
So, you also get, remember, when you're looking at this, you have to remember that, that, in spite of what, you know, Jack had raised that point about, some of them don't have full active frontage, but that active frontage is another governor of land use of what has to be in that area. So, even though we would say banks or credit unions, what I was thinking is that's on the second floor, not on the first floor.
So, okay, so active frontage is the, the thing that makes it, we don't have to say two in the land, in the regulating plan? Like, that was my question, is how do we regulate what goes on the first or second floor? So, the active frontage is the way you do that?
That's one, the special requirements can be another. Could be three different sections within. You'd have to look and see, but that's.
And the, the important part of what, what we're doing, this is, these two, these two things are very important. This is essentially, this is your zoning map, right? So, we still have, even though it's form-based code, this is a hybrid form-based code, because there's no way, there's no way I was gonna be able to sell this community on a true form-based code that doesn't regulate land use. It's just not, that's not, we're not gonna do that. So, we created this table. This table is, this table is taken from our own zoning code, and what we're doing is we're refining it. We're, 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 like we do when we do a conditional zoning, we're throwing out uses to, to get the most appropriate use that we think meets this particular, the intent of the Village Place Plan.
May I ask? Is it the staff's preference that we go down, all the way down to A and knock that out? Or would you prefer us to go across the residential and knock that out?
Even?
For the point of discussion? Yes.
For, for the core area? Like, go through A through E? Go all the way down? Yeah, I think, I think that would probably.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, do you want us to go all the way down A, look at all the, like, right now as we discuss them? Or would it be easier to say, we know A through E, dwelling mixed use is what we're, I mean?
Mm-hmm.
I think it would make sense the, to go based off of the column on the left and go, you know, looking at residential, is that gonna be permitted? Is single-family gonna be permitted in A, B, C, D, and E? And, you know, take it section by section.
I, I agree. That, that's why I was kind of pointing us.
Red, blue, yellow, purple, then green, yeah.
That way, it'll help drive the discussion, so we're kind of not jumping all around, just point of.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay, so dwelling, single-family, right? So, we started with that. Blocks A through E, we didn't think it was appropriate. Blocks G, H, G, H, I, and J. So, you look into, into that area, and that is all, you know, right now, this is zone, neighborhood, commercial, and VMU, I believe. And so, we didn't think it was appropriate in that area. So, you get over to blocks L and M. I don't, do you have the version that has the black Xs on there? That should be, there, there was a mistake there. Those, L and M for single-family should have Xs, red Xs in there. Because again, the vibe, that, what we're trying to create there is the office mixed use, and a dwelling, single-family is incompatible with that, with that concept of what we're trying to create there. And then you go over to block N. Block N is that, kind of that residential area, just to the west of Board Branch Road, where we have all the residential, this is residential use is shown, so the X is appropriate in that area. Again, it's a black X, so it's, it's already allowed by zoning in that district. And then you go over to the Tradition Site, which is block O, which, again, we show, we're showing building types five, six, seven, and eight in that block. Questions on that? Because I'm just gonna keep moving down the list then, get through. Dwelling, two-family, same concept. If you look at two-family, all the Xs, nothing in the core area, nothing shown in, in lower rattlesnake. And we would show only dwelling, two-family within potentially block N.
Single-family, single-family and two-family are the same right now, except it's permitted in N for single-family, and it's just proposed in N.
For two-family.
Yep.
Yes.
Otherwise, they're identical.
Yes. I believe so.
The Xs in L and M are also crossed out, right? So.
Well, I'm sorry, to clarify, in L and M, you said that those black Xs are supposed to be red Xs?
That is correct.
With the line through them.
Not lined through.
Could be struck through.
Struck through.
Oh, you mean struck through.
What did I say?
You said red Xs, which means proposed.
I mean, red Xs with a, or.
You mean struck through.
Struck through. That's correct. Sorry.
Red and struck.
Sorry.
I was wondering the same thing, so I'm glad you asked.
No, you have to ask those. All right. Dwelling, multiple-family. It should be relatively easy. So, we go at blocks A through E. We're not showing any proposed multiple-family as a standalone use. That doesn't mean as a mixed use, it can't be on the, on the upper floors. So, then we go over to block, block G, H, I, and J, lower rattlesnake. The only place that we are showing it as an X where it is currently permitted would be block J, where the, where the, where the greens are currently located. Going up to upper rattlesnake, again, that's not something that, that we were trying to achieve in that area, so that you don't see anything there. And on the Tradition Site, that would be a, a change in the zoning. Currently, multiple-family would be allowed in that zoning district. We're showing a red X, strike through, to remove that particular land use in that area.
I apologize, I wasn't here for the work session where that decision was made. Can you fill me in on why? I'm not arguing with it. I just, I'm wondering what the reasoning was.
I think the thought as a, of a standalone multiple, I, I think the thought, the preference was to have townhouses, cottage, to have a, to allow for attached, attached housing, but to, to have it in, in a fashion that's not prob- I think, the form of a multiple-family building, you know, I think that was the concept that people, people weren't embracing.
The townhouses, yes, apartments, no.
Correct.
Now, we may need more specificity as to what multi-family means.
We, we actually had, I think we have a definition.
Okay, is it well-defined?
Yeah. Well, let's make a note that, I think it is well-defined, though.
I haven't memorized all 400 of these.
Oh.
A building or portion thereof containing three or more dwelling units on a single lot, where each unit has a separate entrance from the outside or through a common vestibule. So.
That's a good point.
Try, would that?
Townhouse.
Anything more than a duplex?
You didn't.
Three-unit townhomes are quite common with separate entrances.
Generally, yeah, generally, those are, generally, the townhome developments were.
Separate, yeah.
And, and once they, once they go past three units, then they, they're not subject to the same one and two-family building code.
Under the state law, correct, yeah.
We, we should be okay on that, I believe?
It's probably worth.
Looking into a little bit? All right. Okay. All right. Townhouses and clustered dwellings, again, on, on blocks A through E, we were showing, right now, they're, they're currently permitted. We're showing to take them out. Blocks G, H, I, and J, I, I show it as a red strike through to take them out. And then on the Tradition Site, we're showing, keeping that as a, as a permitted use in that particular area.
So, that wouldn't be up in block N? That's still gonna be more single-family, you said? So, the townhouses, cluster stuff, wouldn't be ideal there?
No, we, we, we do have, we do have block, so I think.
Oh, proposed, sorry. Oh, yeah. Red versus red with a strike.
Yep, so I missed it. So, on block N? Is it there?
Yes.
Oh, it's there.
It's proposed.
I've got a line going through it off the page. That's why I didn't see it. Okay.
So, we, we have live-work on H, which could be a townhouse-type structure? How do we need to account for that? Or do we have to?
Because, because a townhouse, no, because a, a live-work is gonna be, the first floor is gonna be commercial, and the second floor, the upper floor, would be residential.
Being more like a mixed-use type.
Yeah, it's more of a mixed use.
Okay.
And, and I've been toying with actually creating, I've seen other definitions where it's not live-work, it's work-live. Because the work is the primary, primary thing at the street.
Yeah, because this, the, part of the definition says, live-work units exist as variations of either the detached house building type or the townhouse building type.
Detached. Hmm, yeah. I guess we're gonna have to look at that, that definition. Make a note, we need to look at the live-work definition. All right. Anything else on there? Then we go to family care home. Again, I didn't show the, I showed, showed us taking those out of A through E. And then I, I might have missed this, because of the family daycare, we show being allowed in G, H, I, and J. And that, again, that doesn't fit with the building types that we're, that we're showing in that direction.
I do think, though, if, if single-family is permitted in a zoning district by statute, you have to allow.
We're just not allowing any single-family, so that's a good point, but we're not.
So, just, you know, where, where single-family is allowed there, so.
Yep, that's a good point. So.
Alex, can you say that again?
By statute, you, I'm pretty certain you have to allow, if, if you have, in single-family residential zone districts, you have to allow for family care homes. Now, there are certain parameters, distant separation, things like that.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So, then, going across, then we would, then that would be permitted in, there'd be a red X, right? In, or a black X, actually, in N? Because we're, we're providing for single-family in that area, right? And then potentially on block O. Right? That's correct, right? All right. Halfway homes? I'm trying just not allowing those anywhere in here?
I'm, I'm still a little confused about live-work. If we want that to be a, or work-live, whichever, if we want that to be a use, then are we prohibiting that by not allowing these residential structures? Because by design, a live-work looks like a, looks like a place you would live, but you work there.
No.
It won't, it, it would be different.
No. They look, they look like, if you, if you look in, in the precedent images, they show some, some types. It looks like if, if you're going down on Market Street, some of those could potentially be a live-work unit if it was in a townhouse fashion.
Sure.
So, that's, that's the intent now. If that, if, if we might need to make that adjustment in our, in our definitions to make that clear.
If, I don't want to go to other areas, but are we thinking on Pennsylvania Avenue in Southern Pines, if you're going towards the train tracks, they would be on the left side before you get to?
Those condos?
Bennett, yeah. All of that's commercial on the bottom level, and then it's residential above.
But I think those are, there, there's not one unit tied together. The concept is, that's the concept, it's a mixed-use concept.
But these would be more detached.
These, no, that, that could be, they'd be attached like a townhouse. It's attached, but it differs from a, a true mixed use in that there's, there's probably a, a property line, like a townhouse, that separates each of the units.
Yeah, so even though they're connected?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a common property line. Which differentiates from the, that, that's probably a mixed-use building, I would assume. So, it's got the, it's got one floor of commercial, which is probably all under one ownership. And then when you get to the top, those topper, those upper ones, those are probably separate condo units, I would assume.
But they're condos, they're not townhouses, you don't own the lots, correct?
I, I think that's.
Likely.
I think that's the way that's set up, because they don't, they don't own the ground, down to the ground. Okay. Matt?
I can be satisfied.
We can, we, we can talk a little bit more.
No, I mean, the, the fact that you have dwelling mixed use in there, that seems to cover it. I just needed to think through that and not, not be stuck on the structure type.
No, and if we're missing something, and we need to redefine something, make a note, and we'll, we'll come back to that and work on that. Dwelling mixed use, so I'm showing dwelling mixed use all in the core area blocks, showing it potentially. This is where Clark Cadillac gets added. it potentially, this is where Clark Cadillac gets added on, and it's actually existing. All that, see, all those black X's are existing, the existing zoning allows it, so we're proposing to allow that all the way over until block I. We propose taking that out of block J, because block J is where the multiple-family uses at this time. We're also proposing to pull that out of block K. Right? Yeah, block K. And then we, what I think I might have, what I missed on here would be blocks L and M. Because we actually show it on the regulating plan map, I did not show it on this table. So L and M as well should have a mixed-use indication on there, an X on there. And then we get down to manufactured housing and manufactured home parks, and we propose not having any of that in the district. All right, yay, we got through the residential category in half hour. All right. Lodging, this should be relatively quick. So we got the lodging category, bed and breakfast homes. You can see bed and breakfast homes are currently allowed within the core area blocks. We're proposing to take them out, proposing to take them out of GHIJ. And then I have a question mark over on the Tradition site on block O. So if we're going to...
A question mark there. What is the current zoning on the Tradition site, again? It's a unique zoning.
It's VR, Village Residential. That's why I have parentheses around it, because I wasn't sure... Any other feelings on that?
I think David's correct on that, yeah.
Why, I'm not challenging you. I'm wondering why you feel that way.
Just because bed and breakfast are more viewed with hotels, common carriers, so the standards are different. Bed and breakfast, to me, is more of that commercial use. That area is, for all intents and purposes, residential. The size component, at least what I'm...
I'm sorry, which block are we talking about?
Block O, the Traditions area, the green...
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Size component, I just don't see the, what's, I guess, intended or viewed as practical for those spaces to be, you know, are they going to be two-to-three-bedroom homes? Is the owner going to be occupying the property and then, you know, present for one person to be there? It just doesn't seem harmonious with, you know, that part of town. Now, again, it kind of trickles into the short-term rental conversation, where can people, you know, utilize those residential properties as short-term rentals?
Yeah, let's not talk about that.
Yeah, we don't need to.
It drifts into the homestay issue, too, which needs...
Let's not talk about that either. Let's just focus on this.
Never mind.
No, I agree. I agree with what everybody said, and I think, you know, we can always get added back in.
And the standards, I think, for bed and breakfast specifically, doesn't really fit there.
Consensus?
I could go either way. I mean, Magnolia, if you keep going down Magnolia, it borders the Village Core with a mix of residential and hotel use on the west side of Magnolia. So, we've seen where you kind of can have on the same block a blend, but I could, again, I could go either way.
I mean, I was going to say, it's an easy walk to the Manor and Pinecrest from there, isn't it?
For most people, yeah.
Yeah.
Uphill.
Phil? Thoughts?
I think if we wanted a hotel flavor there, we would have put a 10 in that section, or a nine, I'm sorry, I'm tired. So I kind of agree with David.
But we did put a nine on B, so...
Hold on, we're getting there.
Well, so by that logic, would you then allow bed and breakfast homes on B, where we are allowing hotels?
Yeah, but a bed and breakfast is in a single-family home.
One person has to live there.
It's within a single-family home. That's the key difference.
So it fits better on O. You're right. Good point.
Yay, all right.
Okay, thanks.
Julia, no, you...
Not arguing they should be there. I'm just trying to understand the reasoning and make sure I've wrapped my brain around what's happening here. You know, I think generally, what we are trying to create here is a place that, you know, were I visiting a city, I would want to be nearby so I could walk to it, because it's where the stuff is. But I guess I can be, you know, one block over there on Village Lane in my homestay, so, you know.
Yeah.
Or not. I don't know.
I think my comment has to deal with my thoughts and experiences of bed and breakfast versus what the actual definition is in our PDO. So that's where, I guess, the tension is. Because if you look at the definition, then I agree, you know, could be allowed, but practically speaking, my experience would say, you know, that would be better suited for the single-family or uses that we have there currently.
I agree, and everything you said was very accurate. What we're trying to do here is we're trying to implement that plan and what the vision is in that plan and the comprehensive plan. And to do that, you know, we had to make sure that the appropriate land use scheme categories are set up in that area to promote that. Because if you start to get in incompatible land uses, it can throw the whole thing out of whack. And that's why, you know, it seems like this is tedious, but it's tedious for a reason for what we're trying to achieve. All right. Boarding and rooming houses, I've got a big no on that. Those weren't allowed in the first place unless somebody wants to allow both a boarding house or dormitory in any of these areas. We can just move on. And then we can move on to hotels. And hotels is something that we did have a long discussion on. And so, and the only area that we thought, again, trying to create that sense of place down there, we looked at it in various areas where it could be in that, between blocks A, B, C, and D. I think at the end of the day, what we settled on was we thought the hotel use itself would be most appropriate in that block B area.
Right, there's already a hotel there, correct?
There's, you got the Manor over in the corner.
There's already there.
Correct. And if you saw, you know, if you look at some of those detailed plans that we created, that crossroads, not up there, but that crossroads between B and C and D, that is where we showed that mixed-use potential hotel in that area.
Right.
Now, as you go up to Lower Rattlesnake, currently, could you put a hotel there? Yes. What we're doing is we're proposing, once again, to take that out so we can focus that energy down in that core area. And then nowhere else were we showing, were we recommending any hotels in the district.
Yeah.
Can I ask? Under our current zoning scheme, you may not know this off the top of your head.
You will.
Well, he may not either. It's a bit of a curveball. Under our current zoning scheme, if someone was going to come in and build a new hotel, where could one do so on available land? I mean, that is not currently a hotel.
Well, in any of these, so if you look at the, where all those red X's are, are where they could potentially go. So anywhere that there's an X, that's, in this area, that existing zoning would allow a hotel to locate.
Any undeveloped lots in that area? Or really developed?
I mean, most of it's going to require some form of redevelopment, but, you know, that property's been for sale at the corner, right behind the office building on Magnolia and McCaskill, you know, next to the brewery. That land's been for sale for a while. Potentially, you could put a hotel there right now. It's going to be a tough-to-develop site, but yes, you could do something like that there. And I think also, if you go up to block, you know, we have, we own some property, you know, I, blocks I and H, there's some vacant property up there that we own, there's the Bill Jones, and then there's some property over on, at the corner, where that green's phase two, where that is located.
But one couldn't put a hotel there?
Not under this...
Right. I guess what I'm thinking of is if the short-term rental ban goes forward, we know now that our resort space is frequently booked out. You know, during high season, it's very hard to stay in Pinehurst. And if the economy needed to adjust and more hotel space was required in order to keep, you know, this area thriving during the golfing season, where would these buildings be absorbed by our current zoning scheme? That's my question.
It's a good question, and that's probably, we didn't talk about, I don't think, that wasn't part of our original discussions when we were talking about the whole short-term, try not to talk about that. But I guess, you know, it is a consideration, so...
Well, I mean, you throw the rock in the pond, and do, 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 do.
I imagine that's being considered somewhere in the background that we haven't had access to yet.
Well, I would hope so.
If I had to take a game theory stab at things.
And it's a question that should be asked. And again, this is a recommend, right now, we're working through to try and come up with a recommendation. That doesn't mean that as the process rolls along, we pass an ordinance over here, and we go, well, maybe we do need some room for more hotels. Let's open up block A, or block B, or all these other blocks. It's a discussion that we can't have.
Right, I mean, our effort is to develop the zoning and the form-based codes that implement the vision...
Yes.
As shown in that small-area plan.
That's correct.
I mean, it's not to expand or change the small-area plan.
And again, it's a discussion that we should have, and we're having it. So I think we make a note of that going forward, that maybe that's something that we need to discuss as we more finalize this. All right. So now we're going to move on to RV Park, and we're not showing any X's there, so I could probably just run through that one. Now, we're going down to office and service. So this, this is where it gets a little bit, again, it gets a little bit more complicated because of that old active frontage requirement. So when we're putting red X's around it, it was because the thought was, could it be effectively locate on the second floor above an active frontage requirement use? So banks, credit unions, let's go to the easy one, let's get away from the core block for a minute, let's go all the way over to block F. And so Clark Cadillac, could we put a bank, credit union, financial services over there, potentially? Is that going to be a harm to the neighborhood? Is it going to be a harm to anybody? GHI, GHI, so you look at, you know, look at that block between, you know, where Pinehurst Pizza is and along there, GH and I. Again, that's, it's a use that's permitted, it's permitted right now, is then a use that we would think could potentially locate over there, this type of services. Thoughts?
Yeah, that's good.
J, we pulled it out of J because that's where the apartment is. We added, K is, it's currently allowed in K, so we kept it in K. Why do I keep getting lost in K? Okay, it's not one. And then we proposed it potentially in L and M. Now, would that detract from our ability to put other general office uses in that particular area if we allow banks, credit unions, and financial services in blocks L and M?
I think financial services is a professional office type of activity. I mean, that's what it is.
That's what I wanted to ask, is there a way to differentiate between, like, financial planning offices and banks? Because in terms of traffic, there's definitely a difference.
Financial planning would be generally, that'd probably be a professional services.
Okay.
Professional and personal, right?
Okay.
We also have banks down in the village that don't have the drive-throughs, they're just, you know, so it's kind of all over the place.
Yeah, if you restrict the drive-through.
Yeah.
So L and M, fine. Okay? So let's go back to the core area. So, again, this would be generally, and again, we have to look at that frontage requirement again, blocks A, B, C as a second-floor use or where active frontage is not required. Okay with that?
So, is it, do you think a bank is going to be on a second floor above something else? It just, I just don't understand that.
But remember, you're getting...
I don't.
And you have to have elevators, and what about...
Not going to happen.
Financial services. So...
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to.
Financial services, yeah.
Some of it's, also, some of it's not about, would it locate there? Could it locate there? So is the probability of it locating there? I don't know. Like David said, I've seen mortgaged places on the second floor of places.
Can you put conditions on this where if somebody wanted to replicate, like the banks we have now down in the village? Where there are new drive-throughs? I mean, is there a way to, you know, so that way, somebody's not taking up a large parcel? I mean, is that even an option? So you have a connected building with a bank, where, you know, you have First Bank down in the, I mean, where they're thin, narrow, you don't have a full wraparound. I mean, is that even...
With a design standard, I think we might have that, and we have a current, we only prohibit, we do allow banks to have drive-throughs, no way. I think we have some design standards on drive-throughs, and I'll have to look and see if we have any design standards proposed in the form-based code.
There's some...
But that's certainly, that's certainly, the active frontage would kick in, and I don't think it would work. But we'll have to look at that to make sure.
So we don't need to update the regulating plan if we start checking boxes under office and services to include two in these areas on the regulating plan?
For A, B, and C?
Right, because right now, we don't include...
No, because it could be, and that's why it gets a little bit confusing, I understand. It's really going to be the second-floor use, and I think we have to talk about this 50% that we talked about for active frontage. So if I got a building that's 100 feet wide, 50 feet has to be some active frontage, what can the other 50% be? Could it potentially be a bank? Or could it be, or could we just hone in on professional and personal services, something like that? I think that's something that warrants additional discussion.
Well, either one, I guess, are technically under our office and the table of uses, so it seems confusing to me. I mean, I don't have a problem with the category of use there, I just think it's not consistent between the plan and the table right now.
On the second floor.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't look consistent.
I think it's consistent in the sense where it, yeah, you still allow the use, you know, upstairs, whether somebody doing or in that business is going to. If they can make a bank work on the second floor, then, you know, so be it. I'm probably not going to go to that ATM, but it, yeah, I think you allow it if it's compatible, so...
And again, you're probably not looking at a bank or credit union, you're probably looking at some type of financial services that would actually locate in there.
Right, so, yeah, again, I'm not against it.
I'm comfortable trying to micromanage every single use here.
I just think...
You know, I like the idea of the active frontage and retail and so forth, and trying to specify that to the extent we can, but to try to micromanage what active, what use can be made of every single space is going to be a very difficult task, considering this is not next year's project. I mean, this is going to happen over an extended period of time, and who knows what different types of uses may develop, to tell you the truth.
We do that already. The existing zoning manages it already. We're just taking the existing zoning...
I understand what we're doing, right, I understand. But I wouldn't try to exclude too much, or, you know...
Right, I'm not trying to exclude it, I'm just saying, if somebody is trying to develop, and they look at this plan, then they say, what can I put on the top? They're not going to look at this and say, office, because we don't say they can put office on here. They come to the table, and the table says, okay, yes, you can, so it just doesn't, like, it doesn't seem married.
Well, there needs to be an asterisk there then, again, too. I mean, we have the asterisk.
Something.
Special, see? Excellent, special requirement. All right. I think that's something we need, yeah, I think the whole 50%, what can be in the other use, needs to be talked, needs to be discussed. I mean, that...
We can mark a good deal of these type of uses for a later discussion, give us an opportunity to see how that can map out, to help us wrap our heads around it, and then go grab some more low-hanging fruit with a little bit less than an hour we've got left.
Exactly.
What low-hanging fruit do you want to start looking at?
Well, because like, in terms of time, if we already went through all the numbers for all these parcels and said, yes, no, but then we come to the table and we say, well, let's look at every category and see again, it's like, oh, well, no, actually, we do want office in these categories, so let's look at it. So it just seems like we're redoing it, but maybe not, maybe.
That's where that discussion maybe makes you revisit some of that. Maybe you have to.
Right.
Reagan, you have office. What kinds of offices?
And we're not getting in-depth on that discussion. We're looking at the general categories that are currently allowed by the zoning. If we don't adjust the zoning, we're going to get potentially incompatible land uses in these areas.
And are these all, they're principal uses of the dwelling or the building, is that correct? Or primary use? It doesn't mean that the secondary use on the second floor, third floor, or in the rear can't be something different, is that correct?
Good point. Yeah. It is meant to be the primary.
Breakfast on the second floor.
It's primary use that we're talking about here.
This is maybe a question for the attorneys in the room, but so if a lot of these, I imagine, first floor, second floor are going to have separate, you know, parcel IDs. So the primary use would be whatever is it within that footprint of that parcel ID?
You essentially have a handful of primary uses on.
On property.
Good. Unless they're condominiums, I mean, the entire structure has a primary use that's approved in the beginning, is that correct? Alex?
You can have condo businesses.
Well, you can, right, but I'm saying there isn't a lot of that around, at least in Pinehurst.
All right. This is what we should do. We'll pull away from core area blocks and discussion of office till we can talk through this a little bit more. But I think we, I think we can still move across the column yet on the offices. So if you take banks, credit unions, we're showing Xs all across, all across the way except on Lot J because of the arboretum, K, L and M, going down to, so let's go down to business support services, Clark Cadillac, X, all the way over to Lower Rattlesnake, XXX, take it out of Lot J because of the apartment, proposing it in Lot, in blocks K, L and M, because it's an office, it's an office, it's potentially an office-style use. It's under offices. Crematoria, took out. Again, we'll keep moving down. Again, let's circle back to, we'll circle back to this discussion on core area. Dryclean facilities, G, H, and I, we're showing it, they could potentially locate there. J, no, because of the apartments. And K, because of, yeah, Block K is, we're showing that as two and three, office or retail. We did not keep it in LM, or L and M. Any thoughts on that?
I will say, I do agree with Jack that dry cleaning could be simply a drop-off. And there's a lot of those in town where they don't actually do the services there. And I know in our definition, it has all of that included. So I think, you know, people living down there, it might be kind of nice to have a drop-off.
But they can't have it in blocks G, H, I.
Well, yeah.
We're not prohibiting it. We're just saying, we're focusing it into this one area.
Yeah.
All right.
I just wanted to go on record to say I agree with Jack.
Okay. Write it down, Shannon. Okay, medical clinic, we're showing, the only place we're showing medical clinic at this point as being a, as being a permitted use or permissive would be Block K. And I think we probably missed it, it should probably be, be in L and M as well. Because if we, if we said medical office. Yep. Okay. Personal services, let's go through there. We'll start at Block K. Clark Cadillac, appropriate. Blocks G, H, and I, appropriate. Block J, no, because of the greens, so it's not there. Blocks K, L, K, L and M as being appropriate land uses in that area. See, when we don't have the core area to deal with, we can just fly through this.
The other areas are consistent.
You actually are covering the toughest uses. I think when we get down here further, it'll be a little easier.
Next, next one, again, under office, under office services, again, we'll get out of the core area. So professional services, Block F, which is Clark Cadillac, G, H, and I, which is Lower Rattlesnake, J, it's not, it's not permitted. K, K, L and, L and M, we're proposing to allow that again in L and M.
We need to move the, move the slide on the TV.
Oh.
Thank you.
Got it? Sorry. Radio, TV, studio.
Sorry, that was louder than I meant it to be. For professional services, what is going on in D that we're saying not there?
That's an error. That should be, that should be, that should be a hyphens around that. And we're not talking about the core blocks right now.
To parentheses around D.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, radio, TV, studios, let's go, we took it out of G, because it currently could allow in G. G and I, it could currently allow, I is that mixed-use building, so we just propose to take them out of that. And K. Any thoughts on that? I just, not sure if that's an appropriate land use in that area. Small equipment rental, we kept it on F because of, that's where Clark is, and they do, you know, it's more appropriate and probably because of the use there, but we pulled that out of G, G and H, as well as K, where they're currently permitted as uses. That's a good question. My Harley or?
Pedals. Annual.
Schwinn. Schwinn.
Schwinn.
Like renting bikes?
And our, golf carts aren't allowed to be rented here, are they? Is that?
This is what it says, small, small equipment repair rental. The repair and or rental of small equipment has a primary use, including televisions, computers, cleaning equipment, vacuum cleaners, or other equipment that can be transported by automobile, small truck van, but excluding small gasoline and other combustion engines. Is that the right one? No. Yeah, there is.
That doesn't sound like bicycles.
That's, yeah, I guess that's just more like your, when that kind of place existed more often.
Yeah.
Instead of buying a new TV, you would get your TV repaired, so.
I mean, it is a, it's a neighborhood service.
It wasn't, I mean, my, yeah, that's, so that might be, because, yeah, I'm just trying to think of something I'm not necessarily seeing, and we haven't gotten to the next section yet, but, and it could be general retail, I guess, but something like that, rentals, bikes, tours, stuff like that.
That's a good. That might be something, again, something we have to look at where the bike repair would be allowed. Maybe, maybe it would be under small equipment, and maybe we need to revisit that. So let's revisit that.
Vehicle renting, leasing, and sales says may include et cetera, et cetera. It includes golf carts as well as motorcycle ATV, but it doesn't say anything about bicycles or, what's that?
No. All right. All right. We'll circle, we'll circle back to that. I made a note. Small equipment, small engine repair sales, Clark Cadillac, that block, yes. I pulled it out of G and H and K. Any thoughts on that? I mean, it's already occurring somewhat on, well, it's recurring, well, they're doing engine repair over on the Clark site, so it doesn't appreciably change that. I don't think there's any other small engine repair places within, within those blocks at this point. So if they're not there, if it's not something that we think needs to be added to the environment that we're trying to create, then we'll just keep them out. Veterinary services, on Block F, we, I pulled it out, and it's allowed, I didn't, it's currently allowed in blocks G, H, and K. We did not pull those out because it's kind of like a, well, I guess the indoor kennel might change the component, but as a service to.
Are those always together in the zoning, in the definition? Veterinary services and kennels?
A lot of times they are because they have to keep the, you have to keep like a dog or a cat overnight once you've done some type of, some type of operation on it, so.
Yeah, but boarding versus boarding.
Boarding is different. So I think boarding kennels are defined, are they defined differently?
Well, not currently in our code or.
Yeah, I would say that maybe a couple dozen barking dogs down there may disrupt.
Does our definition of veterinary services include like dog washing places? I mean, they're not really veterinary, but I know that they're there.
It's more like a personal service.
They're personal services?
That's how we've always kind of, because it is, because you're doing dog washing, it's like, it's a salon for dogs, right?
As say grooming.
Does it?
Without.
All right, there you go. Okay. Know, okay, so knowing all that. So what do you, do you think it's G, H, and K? Do you think that's appropriate use in G, H, and K?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, so let's now move down to the, to the core, down to the commercial entertainment. So sexually-oriented businesses, we pulled that out. ABC store as a retail operation, that's why I kept it in on.
There a reason we're keeping it out of L and M? Because I mean, I kind of view that the same as the other, you know, office, medical.
Are you back on the vet?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Good point. Good discussion.
Which one keeping out, did you say?
Putting.
L and M.
Yeah, allowing it in L and M, so it would be K, L, M. And then, I mean, I'd almost take it out of G and H.
Well, they're currently in G and H.
Okay, so yeah.
Currently, it's currently permitted as a, it's not there.
That's where I take my dog.
Add it to L and M.
So L and M? What are everybody's thoughts on L and M? That's the area where we're trying to, once again, with the conversation that we had with the council was, you know, we could have some medical clinic there of some type or some medical offices there of some type.
Are you trying to push that area more medical?
I think, I think that was the concept that I know council had liked at the time. That doesn't mean that council.
Or did it just?
Sort of the carryover from the hospital district?
Yes.
So that this becomes a bedroom.
Yes, I think that was.
Idea, as it were, for.
Yes, I like, because it's so close to Highway 211. So I think that was the thought. I think that's what they, that's what was appealing.
That's the case, and it's, if that's intended to, I guess, just be medical, then it makes more sense, but if it's continuing some of that office.
And M and L.
I would almost.
In L and M specifically.
Yeah.
I would almost suggest maybe looking at breaking up this category, if it's possible. I mean, even if you have an indoor kennel, there's going to be an outdoor component to that. So, yeah.
But Phil, that is a great point. Maybe we do need to redefine and break it up just to not have some of that outdoor component or anything like that. Because right now, it does allow for that indoor kennel, that indoor kennel use.
Yeah, it would be like indoor kennel other than.
What?
Medical or other than veterinarian.
Yes. You have to look at what a potential appropriate use would be in this area. Inappropriate. Would a veterinary services with an indoor kennel, if you, if you lock that, if you put that over in G, and you have all those residential around in G, is it, is it a potential nuisance for barking dogs on an indoor kennel basis?
I imagine some people would say yes, some people would say no.
Yeah.
Dog lover. I've got dogs. Bringing it to the attention.
I have barking dogs all around me.
Sure, it may not even be the kennel piece, because even if, you know, vacationers aren't dropping their dogs off, if it's a vet, they're always going to have dogs there, even if it's just one-nighters, so.
I'm just, I'm going to put question marks there on blocks L and M.
Well, I think it's, is it an and or an or? Is it veterinary services and or, or indoor? Can they have an indoor kennel without veterinary services?
I think, Alex, you had said something about breaking it apart, didn't you?
Basically all of that, but just any outdoor activities are incidental. So I'd argue that a doggy daycare, you know, part of doggy daycare is letting the, if you have an outdoor component to your doggy daycare, then sure, but if it's all in a warehouse, then, you know, that's an indoor, indoor.
But this doesn't allow for doggy daycares, right?
I don't know.
Does. All right, that's another one to circle back to. All right, can we move down to commercial entertainment now? Core area blocks, ABC store, I had circles under parentheses as potential uses in those areas. It's a retail, it's definitely a retail use. It's definitely an active use.
Does that mean wine shop or ABC store?
Yeah, because I'm going to say, if what you want are people who are parking their cars and getting out and walking around and shopping, very few people walk around and shop with their whiskey bottles. You know, that tends to be a place where you park, you go in, you get your stuff, and you leave.
Or the last trip I make.
I suppose it could be the last, you know, you got your shopping bags and then you go pick up your gin.
It's the state-run ABC store.
Okay, a state-run ABC store. It seems like that would be more on the perimeter and, you know, a wine bar, something where it's going to be more of a place where you're going to sit down and partake would be in your core.
Fine, it's ABC store. It's defined.
Then I would put it more over in the Lower Rattlesnake area myself.
Yeah.
So as you drive down towards the place, you pass the ABC store.
I wouldn't prohibit wine shops per se, because we have one downtown that's reasonably successful.
The definition doesn't.
That serves, too, so.
The definition doesn't include it. The definition of alcohol beverage sales store is just ABC store.
Okay, well then.
Yeah. It doesn't include. Yeah, I think Lower Rattlesnake, I agree.
Yeah, so out of the core area blocks.
I don't know. I'd say, I'd say out of the whole, the whole area. I just, like, there's plenty of places to put an ABC store. I don't know that in an area adjacent to residential is a.
Neighborhood service. There's no doubt.
Maybe if we put it upstairs. Kidding, that's a joke.
You have to be able to walk up the stairs to.
Yeah, I would say if they are coming back to this area, I think the preference would be that they're not driving far out to go get it, or, you know, depending on what state of mind they're in.
I don't see it as being, you know, in her move.
Okay. Any other comments on that? I mean, we could actually put it up, if that was the case, you could put it, put it up in Block K as well.
I mean, if you think about it.
Oh, I do have it there, nevermind.
Now I'm arguing with myself.
Right beside the greens.
But there's a, you know, there's an ABC store on Broad Street in Southern Pines. And, you know, it could either be your last stop on the way to your car, or it could be you just drive in, park, grab your stuff, and go. You know, and it certainly is, you know, I've never thought that it was glaring on Broad Street, what's an ABC store doing here? But I will say it's at the end of Broad Street.
It is.
Not in the middle of the block between a bunch of retail uses.
I think A through E, it wouldn't be compatible, but I could see it in, not further, further away, but still separate from the medical. away, but still separate from the medical and other office uses.
And I think the form-based code would also dictate where it goes is, you know, tastefully done, it's not just a packaging store that, you know, has bright red letters that says ABC, maybe it's a little.
There'll be architectural requirements on that, correct? So then, with that discussion, block K, would that, then, block K, is that, would that potentially be appropriate? That is a cross from Park, but.
Across from the community center?
Across from Cannon Park.
Yeah, so, no. I, I'm just.
And next to it.
All right, nevermind, all right, let's move on.
You're playing soccer, mommy's just going to walk across the street.
Move on, it's not, no, the sexually oriented businesses are not allowed. Amusement indoors, I have got, and this is Jack, probably where you want to have a discussion, I'm showing, I'm showing that in A, B, C, and D, but the way the description is, maybe that doesn't work in those blocks as a primary use.
Are we on indoor amusements now?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think you want a bowling alley there.
I don't think you'll get a bowling alley there.
Well, no, it would be too expensive, for one thing.
But I could, I mean, there's, I can think of a place in Raleigh, it's an indoor golf simulator, you know, where people go putt, so.
Yeah, I, I don't see necessarily.
It's going to be dictated by the space and what's available, so.
And market conditions at the time.
Right, whether or not you can afford that kind of rental space, whether you're going to turn enough money.
Right. No, I think it actually could be, depending upon how it's characterized and done, it could be a positive for the area.
If it's residential.
Okay. So we're showing in A, B, D, C, A, B, C, D, and E, we're not showing in E. We are showing it potentially in the Clark Cadillac property, if they were to get redeveloped. Then we have G, H, and I. And then we showed again, potentially up in K.
Red, yellow, red, and blue, keep it out of purple.
Right, I agree with that, I agree.
Good. Block, where's block J? Oh, there it is, not block J.
Yeah, except for J, that's just the.
Block E as well then, probably?
Yes.
Okay. Amusements outdoors, I showed it, no, nothing. As much as I like them, Billiard Pool Hall, I'm a good pool player, by the way.
Wait.
Any.
So we can't have a billiard pool hall?
You may, but I wanted to have that discussion before making a recommendation on that.
Want to argue for the pool hall?
Well, it just, it just seems very much like, how is that different than an arcade? Unless we're in the Music Man, you've got trouble.
Well, historically, they were associated with CD types, and it's not the way it is anymore.
Oh, I see.
Is defined differently, I mean, it's like a speakeasy.
I don't know if there's much of a business in pool halls.
No, I don't imagine there is, but what is the difference between, if I have a, a bar that has a pool table, am I a pool hall, or is a pool hall not allowed to serve alcohol? I guess I don't know what a pool hall is these days.
Generally, pool halls, you're going to have a room that's full of multiple amounts of pool tables.
That's the primary use.
Yeah, and they, and what they do is they, they rent them by the hour, so.
Do not exclude other permitted uses from having no more than two billiard tables.
No more than two, okay. Oh, no, okay, I, I, all right, I have been to a pool hall in DC, I know what one is, thank you.
Excellent.
So thoughts, should it, should we show up on, on any of these categories?
Well, it seems to me they aren't any different than an arcade. Does it seem different to you?
Yes.
I associate them with.
Because I, I think the, the, the pool hall, you're, if you think about what an arcade or, or, you know, simulator might have, you know, I'm not saying you're not going to take the whole family to a pool hall and spend the day there and, you know, whatever that might entail, but, you know, likely that's not going to happen, and the distinction there is, you know, it's going to be a late night thing, people are going to be drinking, hanging out, is that harmonious with the rest of the activities that are there? You're more likely going to go there, shut yourself in for a few hours, and not be walking from place to place, not saying it won't happen, but.
One thing to keep in mind, I think, is, I mean, nothing would preclude special use permit requests later on, if a compelling argument was made for a particular business or use type, and so I think we're just giving broad, general guidelines for an area.
Yep, we are.
Like I said, if someone makes a compelling business use and convinces council for a special use permit for a particular use, well, then it makes sense in the future, go for it then, but again, we're just applying broad, broad brush concepts.
It's still a specific use that we're showing, if, if we put an X here, then we're showing that as a potential, so if we're, the conversation that we're having, things that were, it's valid conversation that we're all having.
Right.
To determine whether that is the type, if you go there, are you going there for a couple hours? Yeah, you probably are going to.
I will say, now that I recall that I've been to one, you know, it was when I was living in DC, we all went out to dinner, and then afterwards, you know, a group of like six of us went and shot pool and had some beer, you know, it was fun, I was terrible, that's probably why I've forgotten it, but, you know, it was a fun thing to do after hours, I wouldn't imagine anywhere else you'd do that in Pinehurst. I cannot imagine.
No.
Because you're going to walk from a restaurant or walk from a bar, I'm not going to get in my car and drive to a pool hall, it's not going to happen. I don't know, not that I'm arguing for them, I think just if we say that they're not here, then that, that particular use we're saying we do not want in Pinehurst.
Well, I mean, it's not allowed in any of the districts, because you don't see a red X with a strike through, it's not allowed currently in those districts.
Okay, that's fine.
Anybody with a compelling reason to put it on anywhere? Okay. Matt, all right, I already know, now we got the next one coming up, Matt, all right.
I'm fine with the next one.
Okay. Bar Tavern nightclub, definitely an active use, so that's why we're showing them, the black X indicates it's, it's currently allowed, E, I think the zoning doesn't currently allow it in there, so that's why we're proposing an X right there, Clark Cadillac, potentially, well, it, it's currently allowed there as a use, G, H, I, we pulled it out of J because it, because it's a, because that's where the greens are, and then we pulled it out of K as well. So thoughts on, on the way we have it? G, Lower Rattlesnake, if you go to Lower Rattlesnake, you do have, you do have a couple bars over there on McIntyre. Any, any qualms about anything there, with the exception maybe of Clark Cadillac? Okay. Garden Center, I pulled Garden Center out of everything, because that was one of those outdoor uses that takes up a lot of, a lot of land, so I just pulled that one out. General retail, I put general retail generally across the board until you get to block J, and then I added it into block K, because we're allowing, we were, yeah, we were allowing retail, because we have retail there.
Can I, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to garden retail for a moment, Garden Center. When I think about, again, downtown Southern Pines, we've got gullies at the end of the strip, and to me, that makes sense, it seems like a really appropriate place, because if I'm doing my kind of shopping rounds, that is a reasonable place for me to go to a garden center and pick up a plant, or pick, go to their Christmas store, or whatever, yeah, it takes up a lot of room, but where, where in Pinehurst could one be now? If we want to make that available to people.
Pinehurst South?
Pinehurst South?
That's, a lot of these, yeah. If they're, maybe not suitable for the Village Core, but elsewhere in Pinehurst.
Okay.
I think Pinehurst South would be, again, I come back to Raleigh, and the place that I'm thinking of is Logan's.
Yeah, and I mean, and that's, that's all, that, that's fine, I just want to make sure we're thinking about where these things go, so we aren't making people go to Aberdeen or go to Southern Pines to, you know.
I agree, I don't, I don't think it has to be large, I mean, the gullies lot isn't huge compared to these lots we're talking about on here, that could be recombined in these certainly new areas if somebody were so inclined, so I, I think restricting it maybe in the yellow or even purple wouldn't be inharmonious with other uses.
I think, I think in blocks, if, if we're talking about something like that along the frontage of I, J, and G, I think that is going to be contrary to.
Okay.
The land use form that we're trying to create, but I could see it, I mean, you could potentially, you know, F, if that would ever redevelop, you know, I think that site would be large enough for something like that.
I want to use, you know, I need the microphone a little bit more, David, sorry.
Yeah, I think F, and then possibly G, but only, you know, if G were split up between active and general frontage, the part that's general.
And it's just such a small, that is such a small distance between Rattlesnake and.
Yeah.
Just effectively.
Barking isn't there like it is in Southern Pines to accommodate.
No, I like the idea of F.
Yeah, I can go.
For F.
What's this, what's a place in Southern Pines called?
Gullies.
Not from around here, are you?
It's super cute.
I do all the shopping in Pinehurst. All right, general, let's go down to general retail, so you see I'm showing general, we're showing general retail across the board, all the way up to, well, all the way up to block K, sans block J there. Any qualms about that? Golf course, nope, internet sweepstakes facilities? Again, something, no. All right, outside, outside sales.
Quick question though, does outdoor amusements include a miniature golf course?
I believe it does. Right, how, do we have that discussion with somebody? Oh, golf course, is it part of the golf course? We did have, we, we did have a discussion on one of those ones.
Recreation outdoor, actually, isn't it?
Oh.
Golf course specifically calls it out, not including mini golf.
So what's your thinking there, Jack, what are you thinking?
Well, I, I just make a note as to whether or not we ought to even think about it later on, and we need to fire through a bunch of this stuff.
No, and we're getting, I mean, it's six pages, but mostly.
Yeah, this is the tough one, and once we get past this, I think we'll be, actually be able to finish by six, which is.
Yep, I do.
Self-imposed deadline here.
Yeah, I could be with you on that, the mini golf.
Really? Mini golf, mini golf?
There's many enough.
You might bring your family there and stay for the day.
Takes up a lot of space, but.
That's what we're.
Especially if there ends up being a.
We're getting ready to get one right by Lowe's.
That's true.
Can it be?
Get one, then the other one's.
Can you limit outdoor, amusements outdoor to miniature golf?
We could do it, well, I don't know.
We may have to create a new use, we have to think about that.
Yeah.
I mean, because I certainly wouldn't want a go-kart track, but, you know.
I, and, and it is very expansive, that definition, and I think we've had this discussion, it needs to be, we need to look at those definitions, but the mini golf.
A little more discreet, made it to break it apart, yeah.
We have actually talked about, we have talked about this use, so I made a note. All right, general retail's okay, golf course, no, internet sweepstakes facilities, no, outside sales. You can see I put X's on a number, pretty much everything on outside sales except for Clark Cadillac, where it currently outside, well, outside display happens. Any qualms about that? I'm sure you want me to define what outside sales is, are. Outside sales, the retail sales of goods and products of a permanent structure that are clearly secondary to the function contained in the structure. This includes, but is not limited to, landscape materials, lawn and garden supplies, and produce. Definition is not intended to include the specific use category of automobile sales and nurseries and garden centers. So I just pulled it out.
The definition is a little confusing to me, so the part about secondary, is that to say if you had a separate use of a produce market stand that's allowed, but it couldn't be a secondary use on an outside sales?
I'd say, think about a gas station, right, Alex, where they, where they're selling mulch outside of a gas station, or wood outside of a gas station, is that outside sales?
I mean, does this, does this prohibit, but it would not prohibit a vendor from having a sidewalk sale and bringing a rack of clothes out and putting it in front of their store on a nice day?
By outdoor display.
That's a different, that's a different category.
And doesn't preclude food trucks?
That's a whole different category, don't even, that's, I don't even go there right now.
The sale takes place outdoors, I mean, that's really the way I'm reading this, primarily outdoors.
As opposed to a sidewalk sale where I pick up my thing and take it inside to buy it?
Where's in the right way too, most of that's in the right way.
Okay, okay.
All right. We'll skip over, so no pawn shops, I take it? No, no?
Right.
Race track, no. Restaurant, I'm, I think you all agree with that recommendation, so A, B, C, D, and E, F, we're showing it, all that black, G, H, and I, and then we're showing it again in K, because we're allowing retail up in K. Anywhere else that I'm missing it? Pretty much no. L, the L and M, we want to keep them up, because again, we're trying to create that for the office center, and it would be walkable if they did something like that. Theaters, indoor movie or live performance, not, the only place that's currently allowed would be Clark Cadillac, block F, and apparently block G. So thoughts on that in the core area?
I think that's a good add.
Okay. And then we pulled it out of, we pulled that one out of block K. All right. I think we got through a lot of the hard ones, but we got to, we got to go back to the other one, but civic cultural, so we're showing civic cultural facilities, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J, we pulled them out of.
Hold on, I have to look up what the heck that is.
You'll like it.
What?
Now, why would that not mirror what we just did for a theater?
The civic cultural facilities generally are, well.
One is like the sunrise, and one is the office for the sunrise.
I don't think that's true. Does it may include live theater, dance, a music establishment, art gallery, studio, museum, seems to me those are pretty much the same kinds of uses as a movie theater.
But look at where we're promoting them to be, in the core area.
Yeah, I know, but why is it, I'm, I'm simply asking, why is it different than what we're looking at for a movie theater?
Matt, are we, we just said theater, indoor movie, we allowed them in, in the core area.
I know, but where else? Hold on.
Only difference is G.
Yep, the difference is G, and F, yes?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
But why not in G and F?
I think F is, F is a little bit more, I think I thought F was a little bit more remote, but that's why we're having this discussion, thoughts?
I, I think some of these activities are the type of activities that make the core area the vibrant center of, you know, a new village center, and we want to try to direct that there if we can. Does that make sense?
Sure, I just don't know why it's different than a movie theater. Because if I'm, if I'm thinking about it as a business owner, and I'm trying to find a place that I can rent to put my use, you've limited me to such a small area, I may not be able to find an appropriate place to put my use, and so my use will not come to your area.
Pinehurst South.
Well, then you're not creating vibrancy here, are you?
But we are, where we're still, we're not limited, it's not being limited out of this entire area.
No, I know, I know it's not, but what I'm saying is, if you've created a very small area where it's allowed, because that's where you're trying to force it, if I, as a business owner, cannot find a viable place to put my business, because there is nothing for rent, or the rents are. or the rents are so high, I'm not going to come.
You're saying allow that in the same places as the.
That's what I'm saying. You're creating a supply and demand problem here that may end up inadvertently pricing businesses out of being able to be in this area. That's all I'm saying.
I don't have an issue either. I mean, we're having a discussion.
I think that's fair. After reading the definitions, I think they. Yep.
That's why we're going through this process. I know it's tedious, but we have to do it. Otherwise.
Someone wondered why it's taken so long.
Otherwise, you just have to trust, trust me. And I don't think you'll do that, so. All right, community shared facilities. I think the only block that I put in the community shared facilities into to allow was Block N. Oh, that was because it's for, those are associated with like a neighborhood, a small neighborhood park or something like that, or playground. Municipal service facilities, we pulled them out. That's what we're trying to do in the first place, is pull out, pull out those facilities out of the core area. So we pulled them out of this area. Private clubs.
I have a question about private clubs.
We should.
So, and only because I just learned it existed. So I went and had lunch at a, it was like a private, I'm going to say men's club, but it's not what it sounds like, but a, like a private club in downtown Wilmington. It's like a man's professional organization, membership. So would that be included in this? If somebody created the Pinehurst Men's Group or something, and that was a private membership, would that, would this preclude them from not being able to have a facility down there that maybe had meeting rooms, or, you know, maybe like a, you know, whatever it is, maybe they have a lunch in there and servers. I mean, it kind of depends on the primary use, like Jack said, but would that, I'm kind of surprised we don't have one here already, but something along those lines. Just food for thought. If we don't have to discuss it, just food for thought.
I think by their nature, private, you know, that, at least in the core area, I don't think it's probably what you want on the first floor of a core area as a primary use. Maybe in other parts.
Now, once again, you got to keep bringing the fact that it's primary use that we're talking about here. Not to say that it couldn't occur on the second floor, or the third floor or something to that effect.
So I, I mean, in the core areas, I don't think it, I, maybe in the lower, I just don't, as a private use, I just don't think, in my experience with private clubs, you know, they're open for a very short period of time, you have very limited, you know.
You go back to the definition. It's basically talking about meeting and event space for rotary. So.
It also mentions veteran organizations in there, too.
But yeah, I mean, to, but, I, are you talking like a VFW or something like that? Or?
No, I mean, this one is strictly like private, you know, it's, I hate to say the name, but some, Wilmington's Men's Club, I mean, it's, it's space where men go and meet, and they can have lunch there, they can talk business, I mean.
That's a social.
Union League, the Union League Club in New York City.
But, and again, maybe that, that may be more of like a dining, a private membership dining.
What's the, what's the context of the club that is located in? Where is it located?
It's downtown.
It's downtown?
Yeah, it's downtown, yeah.
Is it, is it a street, is it storefront type of look? Oh, yeah, okay.
They got a lot of uses down there, too.
Yeah. Again, it was just food for thought, not, no, no deep discussion needed.
I mean, I guess there's a question of, what is the nature of Pinehurst? Because like, I belong to the University Club in Chicago. But Chicago's Chicago. You know, they, they have so much.
Space.
Plenty of space and so much to rent, you know, or, you know, there are so many private clubs in New York. Is it necessary here? But I will say, in Southern Pines, what was Kurtz Kuchina is now the Elks Club.
Yes.
And then there's also a private club, gosh, right downtown, there's a, it's, it's only remotely a private club. I mean, you pay.
The Masons?
Yes, yes.
Above, I think.
No, 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 no. I'm thinking that there's a nightclub kind of situation that builds itself as a private club. There's one on Broad Street where you pay an annual dues of, I don't know what it is, like $50. And then you're the one who goes there. And the idea is, yes, and the idea is that they're trying to keep it.
It's more of a, some of that's ABC, because it depends on what food you serve and, yeah.
There, there are two of them in Southern Pines.
Lot of the, I don't think those are the private clubs that this is considering.
Okay.
These are more social clubs where it's a, there's some sort of civic or ethic.
Got it.
Nonprofit.
Got it. And is, is that clear in the definition? I'm sorry, I didn't look it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Kurtz Kuchina is an excellent example of what, remember was it, what was there before, when Kurtz was there? That was an active, there was a lot of bringing people to the area. I don't know if the Elks brings that kind of activity to that area. So I think that's a perfect example. You know, maybe, you know, they're appropriate in certain locations, but it's definitely not in maybe some of these core areas that we're looking, again, focused energy. Public safety station, we put them in all districts. Recreational facilities, indoor. I'm not sure what that is. A facility providing recreational activities enclosed within buildings, including indoor swimming, pool and tennis courts, gymnasiums, exercise facilities, and associated activities. So by that definition, you know, potentially, potentially a gym, but that takes up a pretty good footprint. Some, I mean, maybe not in the core block? So what are your thoughts on it? I, I'm showing them, right now, they can be all, every, you know, in the core area. They can also be in Lower Rattlesnake on Clark Cadillac.
I don't think you want them in the core area.
Well, does that include like yoga?
There's no studio, art, dance, martial arts. I think that's, that's, might be, not in the right spot down below, but I think that's a different type of deal.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the kind of use, because I could see, I mean, there's boutique gyms popping up all over the place where, right across from the reservoir, where if that were in a downtown area, where, you know, that can be pretty vibrant. People go to the class, they go to the coffee shop, and then walk around and shop.
We're thinking about how hot asana and rooted are in the same building in Southern Pines. And there's a lot of traffic in and out there.
That's where I want, is yoga a studio, or is that recreation? I think just clearing up what that line might be. Because I, like a gym.
It does say exercise facilities.
Tennis courts, you know, I don't think that fits, but something small like yoga or whatever those fitness studios are, I think.
And we do have a studio definition down below. All right, I'm going to just put a circle on that, and we'll come back to it, just to try and get through this. Recreation facilities outdoors, pulled that out. Religious institutions, pulled that out. Parks, kind of kept that in because we're going to potentially have green space in various areas. And we can, we're the ones who create the parks. So you're showing the green space here in the core area. We can always revisit that if, if we don't think that that's appropriate.
I'd like to just stop and just a checkpoint here, because you've done with that block. You're just, before we go down further, time-wise, it's just about 6 o'clock. Is there a hard stop that anyone can, has, or can we extend for another 15 minutes or so to try to work our way through the entire use table? At, can you, give me a time, at 6 o'clock, pretty much?
Probably is late.
Late, no later than 6:15, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's our quorum.
Is that okay? We're going, we'll go to 6:15, but we will do a hard stop at 6:15. Is that all right?
Yep, that's good. All right. So let's move on to education institution. Child, adult daycare, I pulled it out, I pulled it out of the core block area, kept it in Clark Cadillac, kept it in Lower Rattlesnake, G, H, and I. And then I kept it in Upper Rattlesnake, K and L.
Is there a reason it's out of M?
I don't know, I, I don't know what I was thinking. I've been on that one. I can't, nothing, nothing springs to my mind on the use itself. Any thoughts on any of that, how we have it proposed? Just really, really what we're doing is pulling it out of, pulling it out of the core area.
Yep.
And adding it into the. So you think M, maybe? No. I think, again, we're trying to do the, maybe it shouldn't be an L either, then.
If it's an L, then I say M also, but if it's not an L, then that's a G.
Yep. All right, residential care facilities, I pulled that out of everywhere. That's more than six residents. That's not, that doesn't have the same requirements that Alex talked about before. Community support facility, I have that shown in X, or Block, Block F and Block G.
Describe that a little clearly.
Pardon me?
Community support.
Community support facility.
I think we need to talk about that one.
You what?
I think we need to talk about that one.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand it completely.
A non, a non-government or governmental facility providing personal, personal assistance to individuals in need, such as individuals may include temporary shelter, food service provisions, counseling, instruction, medical services, or other incidental services. It's currently permitted in L and M. And it's currently permitted in, so we didn't peel it back. So that's something that we did not peel back from what's currently allowed in the zoning district, so spend some time discussing it.
Just propose maybe taking it out of G.
And F.
And F.
But adding it to K, is that what you were pointing, David?
Yeah, K, L, and M.
I can understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, there's, when I start hearing government buildings, it makes me a little concerned, outside of public safety buildings.
I just think the services that, that are being provided there are more in the welfare, you know, care.
Health, welfare oriented, yeah.
Okay. Hospital, no. Schools, no. So we get down to the last one, and studio. So studio, art, dance, martial arts.
Which does include yoga, David.
Clearly, I'm a big yoga guy, so I wanted to make sure of it, but.
We'll do some downward dog and some.
I thought maybe you were into the martial arts part of it. That's the part I was concerned about.
So.
I, so the last bit, aerobics and gymnastic studios with no other fitness facilities or equipment. Where does that get drawn? Because a lot of the, even like Pilates studios, you know, I'd, I'd equate that to a yoga studio or something. It's in the name, but they have equipment. So I think just the definition might need some more.
I'm more clarifying the definition.
What is that?
Maybe just more clarifying the definition.
Yeah.
Or.
Maybe the, the word that we need is boutique in there somewhere, you know?
Boutique, as in?
As in a boutique fitness facility.
Oh, I'm thinking boutique, okay.
Yeah, not boutique like I'm going shopping. But like Pilates is usually considered a boutique fitness. I mean, and we have to define that. It's a rabbit hole, but.
No, we can look into that. How about the, the concept of, of these uses across the way, the way we're showing? So we're showing this concept all the way, all the way across. We're not, we're taking it out of L and M, but we're showing it pretty much, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I.
Pretty versatile space, I think, if it's.
A, maybe?
Okay.
Yeah. Or wait, no, sorry, it's removed from L and M. Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
I was just noticing, we've struck almost everything from J, except residential. So why is J even part of Lower Rattlesnake? Why is it even part of the core area if we're treating it like it's not?
That's a good point. I mean, it is a good point. It's developed.
It would be future, it's if the apartments are ever torn down, what would be allowed, so.
Or what could be allowed within the apartments. In other words, could they turn part of it into a vocational school?
Mix use, an office.
Or a gym or something to that. Any of that would have to go through the legislative process, though, because of the site-specific plan and the conditional district. It's, it's pretty pigeonholed as is.
I think it's currently zoned VMU, too, is it? I think part, part of that, I mean.
Because we're allowing nothing there.
It's not, well, we're allowing the existing use.
Except what is there. I mean, is that what we want? I don't know.
Well, it was just built. I don't see it going away anytime.
It's the only thing that can be permitted there.
Because of conditional zoning.
I got to go back to the drawing boards on that one.
So maybe, you know, maybe we pulled out. I mean, that's.
I mean, I don't, I don't know. I just wonder if it's really part of Lower Rattlesnake, if it doesn't do anything that Lower Rattlesnake does.
I know why.
Is it its own thing?
I can tell you why. Because J and I are connected, I believe, aren't they? They're connected in one plan. So they, they have the one plan for.
There's, but there's two, two parcels now.
I mean, if it's.
Part of one planned area, though, so that's.
Right.
I mean, but obviously they're not anymore, because we're not treating them as part of the same plan. We're treating them as distinctly different. So it seems like as long as we're doing this, we've carved J out and call it its own thing, and let I, H, and G be Lower Rattlesnake. Just a thought.
Yeah, another colored area.
I, I'm kind of viewing it separately as it is. I mean, the, to me, Lower Rattlesnake doesn't mean as much as J, H, but G and I. I see why it's there, but.
I mean, we're treating it completely separately. It just makes sense to make it separate.
Okay, the orphaned blocks, we're working that. We might do that. I can do, I can easily do that. We're almost done, though. We're headed to home stretch. So automotive, this should be easy. Nothing on, nothing on that, on that page. Fueling stations.
So essentially, Clark Cadillac Chevrolet will be a non-conforming use after this.
No.
Am I wrong here?
No. No, that's not the, must be allowed somewhere else.
Vehicle renting, leasing, sales?
Do that? It's not allowed elsewhere? Well, that was a mistake.
I wouldn't want to tell them that, so I think.
That, that was a mistake. That was a mistake. Maria, why did you do that? Alfred worked on that portion. All right. All right, industry. So artisan workshops, you can see we put artisan workshop. I, I allowed them across the board, except in J.
I have to move this up on the screen.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, so vehicle sales are allowed in K?
Yeah, we're in J or G, right?
Yeah, F, F, thank you.
Clark Cadillac.
Okay.
Probably the next one, vehicle service, maintenance, repair.
This is the right page, Jack, I can't see.
You got it, that's good.
All right, so artisan workshops, we're showing them across the board. Not in J, but in K and L.
The fueling station, I would leave that in F. Is that, because that's currently allowed, right?
Oh, it is there, that's right. That's correct.
Yeah, anything that's currently allowed in F, I would still, because I'm trying to think if, if Clark ever, you know, ceased to operate there.
I forgot about that.
Bring it into some sort of a.
Nope, I messed up. And probably the same thing for vehicle service, repair body, so that should go there as well. That was my mistake, my mistake.
Isn't there a fueling station currently in, on M?
Okay.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Ooh.
Do we want to leave that there?
But that would be an exist, going forward, would we allow a new?
I don't know.
One to go there?
That's the question.
Thoughts?
Conspicuous by its absence, which we're probably all behind the times, is some type of use called a vehicle charging facility.
Ooh.
Do we? Okay.
All right.
There's a sense of, once you have an underground storage tank, you always need to come up with a use for it.
Sometimes they're accessory, sometimes they're primary, depends on, depends on.
I'd keep it on there for now.
A lot of times they're just in parking lots. A lot of times they're in parking lots of big box stores, things like that. So K, fueling station. It does currently exist. Do we want something like that to go away? I, I mean, it's frequently used, it's.
I mean, it's handy to have, because if you don't buy gas there, you're going to Olmsted Village, aren't you, and to the Harris Teeter? Isn't that the closest?
At, and, A and F.
There's more of the convenience. It's not, there's no other real convenience, it's not sure. short, stop in the area, so I, I'm fine with it. I just, that's another one I missed.
There's not one on that side of the road, too.
I'm going to put an X there. All right, what? All right, can we move back to industry? We're almost done here. So, artisan workshops, any problems with artisan workshops? Took out the recycling facilities, and there's nothing else, as X is in there. Moving down to agricultural. I did put, so the only thing I have anything, well, horse and farm training track on L, and I don't know why I have that. That can come off. I don't know why that's there.
Or is something you could still include on J? That, that might be something you don't have to get rid of there.
I'm showing, oh, okay, J. Okay.
I'm sorry, where are we?
Gardens, community and private.
Agriculture.
Agriculture.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yes.
What, what's the matter? I don't know how that, that's, that might be, that just isn't...
Okay, sorry, I missed that.
That's probably just an error.
Okay, sorry.
I like it.
How are nurseries and garden centers different?
The garden centers, nurseries produce on-site, I think. Garden centers had something about not producing on...
Nurseries grow on-site, is what the definition...
Okay, got it, thank you.
And babies, there's babies there.
Is there, do we want that or not? The gardens, community or private? I think there's almost two different things. The definition doesn't...
No, I got it, thanks.
Okay. Parking infrastructure. Here it is. Parking structure currently allowed in all these districts. So, A, B, C, D, G, H, and I, I pulled it out of the J, of course, and then I pulled it up, and I, it's still on ho. I think that's something we should probably peel back. I don't know if I spent a lot of...
Are you allowed to not allow small, micro wireless facilities? I thought we had to allow those regardless, everywhere.
And it would be except for the green site, based on this.
Okay.
The parking structure?
Do we want parking structure in the core? I mean, maybe an E or on the outskirts?
A, E, and F.
As a permitted use, probably none of them as a permitted use.
Parking structure?
Yeah. Although, nobody's going to put up a parking structure.
I think allowing it, I mean...
Yeah.
And you're allowing a parking structure in the traditions site?
That's probably because it's currently allowed there.
That seems like a incompatible use.
Based on what the regulating plan says it is.
Yeah, I'd say Lower Rattlesnake, although I'd be curious what it would look like when a road frontage, or on a frontage requirement.
On traditions, depending on what happens there, if it were a communal thing and the...
If it were being used by the townhouses? Okay.
But this is a principal use, right?
Oh, I'm seeing, okay, thank you.
Principal use, no.
Yeah, got it.
It...
But do we, do we want a parking structure in A, B, C, and D? You think so? I mean, they have...
Part of those. And E and F.
That's...
Or just in Lower Rattlesnake.
Let's, let's circle, that, you're right, I think, I think that requires a little bit more discussion than we have time left for. The other, the other major one on this one, we can deal with it, a small micro, look at that. It's the, it's the parking lot as the principal use. And I'm not sure if A, B, C, or D, we want a parking lot as the principal use of a property in that area. Right? We want parking to be accessory to the principal use.
Right.
But we don't want it to be the primary use of the lot.
That would probably be the only open issue in that block of uses, is that correct? So, this would be a good place probably to stop. We have some left, and... Right.
But it's a multiple-story parking lot. And I'm thinking, I'm thinking about... I agree, I think, let's circle back a little bit on that one, because I think that requires a little bit of thought.
I think, I think we've made some progress. Are we going to continue this in the next meeting?
I mean, we're almost done with this. I still, we need to get to the lot standards and stuff.
Okay.
We will, there's not too much we need to circle back on this, I think this and a couple other items. But I think we've made great progress. This is what we have to do.
I mean, we, we've got the, the meeting just next Thursday, and it's...
Our next meeting is scheduled for 10:06 next Thursday, is that correct, at 4:00 PM, right?
We, we have a public hearing for a very, very minor text amendment, that's just for some clarification only, so that should not...
Okay.
I think...
Good. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned at 6:16 PM.
I think we've made great progress on this. This is, we have to do this. We have to do it.